Welcome to the 2022 Fort Atkinson City Council Candidates Forum. Our forum will include commentary and response to questions from three candidates running for two open seats on the city council. Voters will find the names of these candidates on the April 5th general election ballot. Candidates are elected to two-year terms. Our candidates include Bruce Johnson, an incumbent, and two challengers, Ron Martin and Eric Schultz. A second incumbent, Brandon Housley, filed papers of non-candidacy in December. During our forum, each candidate will be allowed two minutes for an opening statement and two minutes to answer each of several questions, which have been developed by our journalists at the Fort Atkinson online. Questions have not been shared with our candidates in advance of the forum. Candidates will also be allowed two minutes for final thoughts. Our forum is sponsored by nonprofit and nonpartisan groups, the Fort Atkinson Club and the Heart of the City, produced by FortAtkinsonOnline.com. I'm Michael Klisch, and I'll be serving as moderator for this event. We'll begin with the incumbent candidate, Bruce Johnson. Hello, Bruce.
Hello.
Your opening statement, please.
My opening statement, I guess most people want to know why I'm doing this. A couple of reasons. One is compassion. I love the city of Fort. I've been born here, raised here, went through grade school, all the way through 12th grade here. I love the city of Fort. My bucket list? This is on my bucket list. I want to go through my life and at the end times here, I want to, I want to be sure that I leave something to remember me by, and I want a good memory of the good things I did for the city of Fort. I don't see a finer place I could do that from city council and help the city do good things for all its citizens.
And we'll begin with the questions, and this is a good follow-up to your opening statement. What do you see as the biggest issue of concern for the city?
Of concern to the city?
Yes. If any, up to you.
I would think that at the moment, my biggest issue might be that the new referendum isn't well enough spread and educated to the people of the city. There's very many things that are details and stuff that you, you all probably got one of these in your mailbox. You should get it out and read it. It's important stuff. It's important that the city go through with this. No one wants to pay a little more tax. Me either, but I will to get this to happen.
This is a fish, uh, an issue the whole country is facing, one way or another. Also, on the April 5th ballot is that referendum, of course. You are obviously solidly behind it.
I'm solidly behind it.
Okay. I'd touch on a few of the more important reasons for passing that referendum.
Well, I guess if you were going to describe me, I'd call myself rather than a military brat, I'm a firehouse brat. My father was a full-time fireman in the city of Fort. He joined the force in the mid-50s and served almost 30 years. In doing so, they had four full-time firemen in the mid-50s. Today, we've got four full-time firemen. I think things have changed a whole lot with their duties, the ambulance, uh, the calls that they go on. We need more full-time firemen. One of the ways we can do it is this referendum will get us more full-time staff for the fire department. And then it makes great wisdom and sense to have them run an ambulance too and get kind of two birds for one effort with having a fireman and an EMT specialist all working at the same time and getting better man-hours and better response times.
Thank you, Bruce. Uh, we're going to get a little duller here for a minute. Financing and budgets. What are your issues and concerns?
Um, I don't have lots of issues and concerns. My biggest issue or concern might be that the general public opinion that we waste and spend money like drunken sailors, which is not the case. Of all the things I learned being a councilman, I, I, this is my fourth year, hopefully I'll get another couple. One of the biggest things that I learned serving on city council is how concerned the city staff is with saving the city money. None of the department has to do anything except pay attention to what their budget is and who's the lowest bidder and save as much money as they can get done for the city. That has impressed me immensely with how much effort, time that the city puts in it and the city employees put into giving the best bang for the buck for the city.
Thank you, Bruce. Uh, moving right along in that area, growth, the short, long term, how should the city be dealing with it?
Well, the city's got to do several things. The, uh, housing out on Banker Road, that's a key issue. You can't come here, you can't bring your business here, you can't bring your kids here unless you've got a place to live. Now, housing on a banker road will offer lots of additional housing. We can't stop there. There's other locations inside the city where we could deal with affordable housing. We should have some affordable housing on a banker road. Housing is a key issue to me to make the city a better place to live and have a better tax base so we don't all have to pay too much more, have our taxes raised in the future.
Thank you, Bruce. COVID, still a concern, certainly. Protocols over the last few years have been helping moderate the threat, uh, but still our retail environment is struggling. What can be done locally to help our businesses with recovering and especially as it relates to finding employees to fill jobs?
Well, I, my opinion would be to let it happen. If you force it to happen in either direction, you'll be defeated. If you let it happen, I believe it'll happen right before your very eyes and you'll be pleasantly surprised with how well it happens. Economy's recovering. People are getting less afraid. It's just happening. Let it.
Indeed. And housing shortages here in Fort Atkinson. I've been told people sell their house before they finish pounding the sign in. It could be exaggerating. What are your thoughts on creating new housing opportunities? And how do you see the opport, well, you've already talked about a couple of these issues.
I see there's, there's other locations and some creative minds, creative thinking can find places and locations that are unutilized in Fort. There are those places. It just takes a creative council with the mindset to say, go do this to get, to keep the Banker Road project on target, on pace and upfront. We don't have time to waste and dilly-daddle with it. We need to make it happen. Once that happens, we can spread around and maybe we'll be looking for another subdivision that needs to be purchased or forwarded, but we got to get that one. We own that one. It's big. It's got lots of room. We need to deal with it and not drag our feet.
Indeed. We're going to play a little fantasy game here now. If the city should suddenly be granted a million dollars, what should it be used for?
Other than giving it to you?
You've got my vote.
I think it should be used for our kids. There's no finer reason to be alive than little kids and watching your families grow. There's lots of things that we could do for kids in this town. We're doing lots of things. As a councilman, I've been really for bicycle paths and, and the skating park and all the things that we're doing. There's no road, future road work that doesn't include at least in concept, a bicycle path. Our kids will be able to walk out the house, get on their bike and go anywhere they want with much more safe travel for them. You can be able to turn your kid loose, let him go to the pool, let him go to the skate park, let him go get an ice cream out of Jones's. They'll be able to do lots of things from the bicycle path and really enjoy it.
Indeed. Uh, you're the incumbent. You've spent four years on the council. What were you best at and what was most challenging?
Well, I think I brought a slightly different mindset to the council. I helped them leave no stone unturned. I think there were questions that I was asking that might not have got asked if I didn't. I work well with the council. I work well with the city. I think that we make a really good team down there and I want to stay part of it.
Indeed. And, uh, what are three immediate improvements we could make to enhance or improve the quality of life in Fort Atkinson? You've already touched on this pretty well, but specifically, I guess. I moved here temporarily 27 years ago. I'm still here. It's a great town.
Well, we're doing some of them, and I think that we need to, again, focus on the ones we've got started because there's none of these things happen overnight. None of this stuff is just like thought up today and done tomorrow. The Robert Street Bridge is going to make some inconvenience for parking downtown and travel for a little while, but it's a necessary thing. Um, we should enhance Henderson's pond and the, and the walkway they got. I think that that, that has great potential to exceed or excel past, past what it is and be constantly in use. Uh, the north side could use some kind of tender love and care. I'm not sure what at this point in time, but it should with that new subdivision. There's got to be something in connecting it to, uh, Rose Lake out there. That's a fantastic facility. It's in position well, and I think the design includes a path to get you to that nature site where you could enjoy nature, birds and life.
And now Bruce, your closing statement.
In closing, I'm going to ask for your vote. I could use it to stay in council. I've enjoyed my time in council. I think I've done good things for the city. I've got more things to do. Part of the reason I can do that is that I am an incumbent. There's a learning curve to be in on council and I, I've been through most of the curve and now I can do more things at a faster pace. Please throw your vote my way and keep me on council. I think you'll be pleased with what I do.
And Bruce, thank you for attending our forum.
You're welcome.
And good luck.
Thank you.
Next, our challenger, Eric Schultz. Welcome, Eric.
Thank you.
And would you like to make your opening statement?
Absolutely. Uh, so my name is Eric Schultz. Uh, I've lived in Fort Atkinson for about three years now. I live with my wife, Reba, and two stepchildren who are nine and 11, and they go to Berry Elementary. For education, I earned my bachelor's degree, uh, from the University of Wisconsin, Oshkosh, in supply chain and operations management, uh, and also earned my master's in business administration from the University of Wisconsin, Madison. Professionally, I work at Trek Bicycle as the master scheduling manager for our custom bike operation, uh, where we have manufacturing in both Waterloo and in Germany. Um, I've served in the Wisconsin Army National Guard for 10 years. I've deployed twice, uh, twice to Iraq and once to Kosovo. And for the past six years, I've served in the United States Army Reserve. I'm also a member of the Fort Atkinson Planning Commission, uh, where I've served for the past two years. I'm a member of the Fort Atkinson Lions Club, um, and I'm also a lifetime member of the VFW and recently became a member of the American Legion.
Thank you. Let's get started. What do you see as the biggest concern for the city today?
Well, I think one of the biggest things that we're facing right now is, uh, inflation and the, the rising cost of housing as well. Um, and so I think that with the Banker Road development, um, by adding housing, might be able to relieve a little bit of the, the housing, uh, the cost of housing. Um, but also, uh, you know, residents are going to be facing, uh, higher prices of gas and, uh, with, there's an upcoming referendum which can pose some challenges to individuals on fixed incomes. And I think we need to be cognizant of those issues and all of the residents that we have and how decisions that the city is going to make might impact them.
Thank you, Eric. Also, on the April 5th ballot, here and in many other cities, is a public safety referendum. Your thoughts on the referendum?
Yep. Uh, so first off, I'd like to say that I think a referendum is probably one of the most democratic processes that we have. Very rarely do you get to actually vote on a specific issue. Most times you vote on a person and they make decisions and they may not, may or may not, uh, be in alignment with, with your beliefs. Um, so there's an opportunity for the residents of Fort Atkinson to, uh, do research on the referendum and, and make an informed decision. Um, if we take a look at what we really expect from our city, uh, I think there's two major things. One is public safety and the second are, is like infrastructure, roads, sewer, water. Uh, and those are kind of like two of the main core things that I think that, that I expect from my city. Um, and the city is proposing this referendum because they see a problem with how the current system is working, uh, and this is what they're proposing as a solution. Um, and I want to kind of go back, a very personal experience I had about three weeks ago. I was, uh, in Springfield, Illinois and at Lincoln's Tomb, and elderly lady had tripped and fallen and severely injured her head, um, and had a potential neck injury. And I recall very clearly, um, as we called 911, how seconds felt like minutes and minutes felt like, you know, an hour. And, uh, the proposal that the city has, uh, is hopefully will reduce, uh, response times. And I know for someone in an emergency situation like that, uh, seconds matter. And I've heard stories, especially from Chief Roush, that also kind of aligned with that where he, he felt he might've been lucky that he was at the station at that specific moment to hop in a truck and respond to an emergency that could have been more tragic if he wasn't on site. And so I think that the, uh, you know, I'm, I believe that the, uh, voting for the referendum is the right choice, but I do understand the pros and cons that come along with it, especially as mentioned earlier with.
Thank you, Eric. Financing and budgets, that's what councils do. What are your main issues and concerns about financing and budgets?
Yeah. Um, so I've learned a lot about how constrained the city can be based on state statutes and laws and what, how, how they can grow, um, their levy. Um, and so there's been a couple of ideas that I, I brought up. Um, the, um, I would say the first would be, um, to kind of grow the levy, we need growth of the city. We need more new construction, more businesses in the city. And, uh, in order to do that, we can kind of look at what neighboring communities are doing. For instance, Jamesville and O'Conawalk have full-time dedicated staff to, um, for economic development directors. And although that may not be in our city's budget, um, perhaps we could find something in between, perhaps like an intern or a part-time position where we can do outreach and advertise, advertise our vacant stores, our vacant properties, um, and work with our current existing businesses to ensure that we're doing what we can as a city to help them stay successful and grow.
The next question was about growth. You, um, touched on that certainly. Uh, short-term, long-term, how should the city deal with it?
Yep. So I'm going to use a bank road development. Um, if, if we take a look at the comprehensive plan, uh, for Fort Atkinson, there's very limited areas of places where the city can grow. The soil conditions just aren't, uh, suitable for housing or we're kind of bound by other jurisdictions. And, uh, you know, the city does have kind of a plan for long-term growth, uh, in the, in the comprehensive plan. Um, and it may be that the city has to purchase land and do land agreements with the town of Kashkhanan to provide space for the city to grow.
COVID, still a concern. Protocols over the last few years seem to be helping moderate the threat, but the retail environment is still struggling. What can be done locally to help our businesses with recovery, especially as it relates to finding employees?
Oh, I'm, uh, I'm very well aware of the employee situation. Um, uh, I think if we kind of look at what do we expect or what kind of control do we want our city government to have? Um, so the first one is how much money are we willing to spend, uh, to help local businesses recover? Um, but also what should the city, if we kind of look back at what happened during the pandemic is how much control did we, do we want to give the city to, um, put a strangle hold on a business and then come as their, hey, I'm going to come help save you? Um, where I think we, there's a fine line because we have a lot of residents that are very concerned about, uh, how, um, you know, safety protocols and, and others that want more freedoms.
Back to housing, uh, shortages are a concern, certainly. What are your thoughts on creating new housing opportunities? And what do you see opportunities, while you've touched on Banker Road, do, go ahead. You take it.
Yeah. So, um, I, I know last year during this candidate forum, it was brought up the 2019 UW Whitewater study that showed that there's a housing shortage. Um, and it's not just specific to Fort Atkinson. It's also specific to Jefferson County and, and other, uh, in a lot of Wisconsin as well. And I think the city has to be very careful about how they're going to develop so that it meets the need, meets the needs of the residents. And, uh, one thing that we can look at with the Banker Road development, uh, is on the city's website, they have multiple plans of how it could be developed. And it does include a multitude of housing, uh, from multifamily duplexes, townhomes and, and single family, family homes that I think will help meet the needs of residents.
Indeed. And if the city were handed a million dollar grant, how would you like to see it used?
Um, well, I know that a lot of grants are very bound by, they have to be used for a certain purpose. Um, I know a major concern, uh, in the city are roads. Um, and there are some major projects coming up and the way that those projects are funded, and I'll try to give some more detail, um, the construction and water main replacement and street repair between West Rockwell and West Hilltop is going to cost somewhere between 2.8 and 3.5 million dollars, but the city's budget for street repair is about $700,000 a year. Um, so that means the city has to be very creative in where they find the money to do these projects. And ideally, I know a major concern of, of residents are, uh, street repair and perhaps that would be an ideal place to kind of get us ahead on the status of our streets.
What skills are you bringing should you be elected to the city council and what parts of the job would be a challenge?
Hmm. Um, so specific skills, I would say that I, I tend to be, I, I try to think about, um, issues from multiple perspectives. And serving on the planning commission, I've been able to, uh, start forming relationships with leaders within the city. And I feel like I can approach them with ideas, even if there are ideas that come from residents, I can, um, bring those ideas to the city leadership for them to consider and investigate. And, um, I think that's one thing that I could do serving on city council.
Indeed.
Yeah. And I think, oh, sorry. I, I know you had also mentioned something that might be challenging. Um, this is a very public position, you know? Um, I'm very used to just living a quiet life, uh, but now this is kind of, uh, getting my name very well out throughout the community of Fort Atkinson, so, um, but I'm up for the challenge.
What, uh, three immediate improvements would you like to see made to the city?
Uh, yeah, there's, uh, some things that are very important to me. Uh, one is development throughout the city. I know the Clement Business Park, uh, it has been pretty vacant. Uh, I know that there are some programs to, or there's, at least one of the lots is sold and I've seen some plans of what may be built there. But I'd like to continue to see not only grow, uh, providing opportunities for businesses to come to Fort Atkinson and grow, uh, but also we need employees to be able to staff those businesses as well. Um, so continued housing development. There's plenty of other vacant lots, especially what is considered the Kashkhanan Estates, uh, development kind of behind the Pick and Save, uh, Quick Trip area on the west side of town, um, that are vacant, um, that, and some of those are, although the land is kind of wet out there, I think there are still plenty of lots out there that are suitable for building, uh, and hopefully that can, uh, provide employees for businesses.
And I guess we're set for your closing statement.
Okay. Um, be pretty short. First, I just want to thank the, uh, Fort Atkinson Online and the Fort Atkinson Club, uh, for hosting this event. Uh, I think this is a great way for, uh, residents to learn more about the candidates and the people that they're going to see on their ballots on April 5th. Again, I believe I can be a nonpartisan candidate that is willing to listen to residents' ideas, complaints and thoughts and help keep the city on the right path. I can work and communicate effectively with the leaders in the city and keep residents' concerns in mind. Uh, I believe we can, uh, maintain our small town charm, uh, while still growing and developing. And I hope you come out and vote on April 5th. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. That concludes our time with Eric. Thank you for attending our forum and good luck, April 5th.
Thank you.
Joining us now, candidate Ron Martin. Hello, Ron.
Hello, Michael.
Would you like to give us your opening statement?
Thank you. I'm Ron Martin and I'm running for Fort Atkinson City Council. Although I didn't grow up in Fort, it's become my adopted hometown. Uh, my wife and I have lived here for almost 30 years and have raised two children that went through the Fort Atkinson school system. Uh, I guess I'm running because I see a need for some fresh ideas and, and new thinking to solve our city's pressing issues. Some of my priorities include economic development, growing our tax base and having, uh, high-quality public services, including public safety at a reasonable cost. Fort has lost major industries and retailers over the last few years. Clement Industrial Park on the south side is mostly vacant after 20 years and there is still $1.6 million of debt on that property. Only one lot has been sold in the past 10 years, but nothing has been built on that yet. Several small businesses have wanted to locate there, but my understanding is that for one reason or another, they were not able to work out a deal. We need a plan, a new plan to attract industry or sell that land for any development that would pay taxes. I strongly support police, fire and emergency services, but we can maintain high-quality public safety without raising taxes 10% as the April 5th referendum would do. With gas at four bucks a gallon, inflation running at 7% and all of our costs increasing, the middle class is really being squeezed. We should be looking to cut taxes, not raise them. The city also needs to improve efficiencies and reduce borrowing. We just borrowed another $2.3 million for one year in anticipation of longer-term borrowing next year. This may be good short-term planning, but long-term, I think the city should look for ways to cut back on borrowing.
Thank you, Ron. What do you see as the biggest single concern or issue that the city's facing?
Well, I think the growth or lack thereof and the loss of businesses over, uh, recent years is the biggest challenge that we face and one of the biggest reasons why I'm running for city council. The information that gets out to the people, um, sometimes is not always a true indicator of what's really going on, but it really troubles me when I hear that, um, some businesses that would like to buy land and locate in the Clement Industrial Park have been unable to, um, because they're not the right kind of business, because they're a small business. Um, I think we should be open to looking at any type of business that would want to locate there and use some of that vacant land. Um, the, the biggest single detriment to growth of the city is the lack of businesses that are going to provide good-paying jobs, and I think that's our biggest challenge right now.
Thank you, sir. Also, on the ballot, April 5th is a public safety referendum. What are your thoughts on the referendum?
Well, as I said on my opening statement, um, I strongly support police officers, firefighters and emergency service personnel. Um, but I think that we can maintain high-quality services without raising our taxes so much. Um, 9.77% raise is what the referendum is calling for, or roughly $770,000 per year going forward. Um, and that's going to stay on the books if the referendum passes, I assure you, forever. Um, that's never going to come off. That's going to continue. And this is kind of how the city government, um, here in Fort Atkinson works. Taxes never go down. They just keep going up and keep squeezing the middle class and keep squeezing people who may or may not have a good-paying job. I work part-time. Uh, a lot of people, uh, may go outside of Fort Atkinson to find work, um, because there aren't the businesses that, um, in the city that can support those jobs. And I believe that, uh, it's just necessary to tighten our belts and that the referendum And I believe that it's just necessary to tighten our belts and that the referendum is, is not prudent at this time.
Thank you, Ron. Financing and budgeting. What are your issues and concerns at this point?
As I just mentioned, I think some of the belt tightening that needs to be done, and this is across the board, every department should be looked at in terms of where can some of the fat be cut? I know that the city does a very good job of maintaining services and spending our dollars wisely, but I've come to question some of the decisions that have been made over recent years in, in spending some of the, our tax dollars. I'm, I'm not sure that the city buying 75 acres of land on the northwest side and going into the real estate development business is a wise use of our tax dollars. I, I know people clamor for affordable housing and say that there is not enough of that. And I, I encourage solutions to be worked on and, and better ideas to be found, but I'm not sure that the city buying that land is the best approach to take.
Thank you. We've already, you've already touched on this one as well, but growth, short term, long term, how should the city deal with growth?
I think there's several different ways and avenues that the city can grow. Since the 2010 census, Fort Atkinson has added about 200 residents. That's not really growth in my book, that's stagnation. We, we have to put more of a priority on attracting businesses and attracting people to come into Fort Atkinson to spend their dollars, whether it be retail, as I mentioned before, new restaurants, new businesses that will draw people in. I looked at the Riverwalk here at the Fort Atkinson Club, we're right on the river, and this is a great facility. We need more of these type of developments downtown that will draw people in and see what a great place Fort Atkinson is to live, work, and also spend their money. And so I would, I would look at more efforts, better thinking, to try to have the growth be greater than it has been since 2010.
Thank you, Ron. COVID-19, still of concern. Protocols have seemed to be helping moderate the threat somewhat. It's, we're in better shape today than we've been in a while. Still, the retail environment is struggling. What can be done locally to help businesses recover, especially as it relates to finding employees?
Well, that's a tough question. I, I know where I work, it's always difficult to find employees, and I think everybody is bottom of the same boat. Finding qualified workers is really difficult in this environment. I, I would like to think there's some way to wave a magic wand and, you know, give a, give an influx of retail support, but I'm not sure that that's possible. I would like to support the business community and especially retail in whatever ways the city can without spending a lot of money and a lot of our tax dollars to do so. Maybe just being more encouraging, more open to different types of businesses than have been considered in the past. Looking at the downtown area, more restaurant development, more Riverwalk development, I think is something we should look seriously at to try to bring in and support those small businesses that we rely on.
Housing shortages, a concern. What are your thoughts on creating new housing opportunities? And how do you see, well, we've already talked on the north side, I'll let you take it from there.
Okay. Well, this is a tough one because, again, my general philosophy is that smaller government is better government. And if government is smaller, it will find efficiencies that are necessary to conserve our limited resources and conserve our tax dollars. I believe that private developers are better suited to do that rather than the city purchasing land and driving that process of housing development. I would feel better about the private businesses that are, that do that for a living every day, to be able to know what types of developments are needed and to be able to market the land that's available around the city of Fort Atkinson to, and for example, the Loblawman property and that surrounding area on the north side is a great example of land that should be available for development very soon, and we should take advantage of that.
Thank you, Ron. If a million dollars was granted to the city of Fort Atkinson, don't laugh, how do you think it ought to be used?
Sorry, I laughed. I would take half of that money and put it into debt service. As I mentioned earlier, the Clement Industrial Park is still, got $1.6 million of debt on the books. I would use part of it for that and for other debt service that the city has. I would also take part of that money, let's say maybe a quarter of it, and put it into looking for ways to reduce the tax burden on every resident and business in Fort. Try to give some incentives maybe to attract new businesses into the Clement Park to be able to use some of that land. Or maybe it's necessary to take a look at just cutting bait and selling that land for other types of development.
Thank you, Ron. What skills are you bringing to the city council should you be elected? And what do you see as a challenge?
Well, after 35-plus years in the business world and in the private sector, I've worked on budgeting. I've, I've been able to increase sales and lead a team that has built up businesses. There's, there's a lot of skills that are involved in the private sector that come in very handy when you're looking at budgeting and finance. So I could bring those skills to serve the city of Fort Atkinson. What might be a challenge? I, I tend to speak my mind, and in a position like this, that might be, might get me in trouble, but I would rather tell people the truth rather than what I think they want to hear.
Thank you, sir. And three immediate improvements that you could make to enhance the quality of life in Fort Atkinson, what would they be?
Well, as we've talked about before, I would definitely do something new, have a better plan for the Clement Park to attract new industry, new business into the town. I would, I, I think that the, while it's a valid, it's a valid thing to look at, the referendum that is on the books for, on the ballot for April 5th, to quadruple the full-time staff of the fire department while providing excellent emergency services. I know that's important, but I would vote no on the referendum. And the third one, I would just say that I, I would be a watchdog for taxpayers, and I would bring my private sector experience to work in that role.
Thank you, Ron. And could we have your closing statement?
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, I did not grow up in Fort Atkinson, but my wife and I have lived here for nearly 30 years, raised a family here, and it's our adopted hometown. We've come to love Fort Atkinson and want it to be a great place for everyone to live, work, raise a family, and enjoy life. Although I think Fort Atkinson has gotten into a little bit of a lull or kind of a stagnant state of affairs, I believe that Fort Atkinson can once again be a great place to live and do business. I grew up in a dairy farm where I learned the values of hard work and honesty and integrity. After 35-plus years in the private sector, I want to serve the people, I work part-time, our kids are grown and out of the house, and I believe I have a contribution that I can make to my adopted hometown of Fort Atkinson. If you would vote for me on April 5th, we would all help ensure that Fort Atkinson has a bright future for all of us. Thank you.
And thank you, Ron. That concludes our time with Ron Martin. I want to thank you for attending our forum and good luck, April 5th.
Thank you.
That concludes our 2022 Fort Atkinson City Council Forum. We hope you found your time with us and your candidates interesting and informative. We would like to thank our sponsors, the Fort Atkinson Club and the heart of the city. We would also like to remind our viewers to watch for our next candidate's forum, which will feature four candidates running for the Fort Atkinson Board of Education. Look for details about that forum on fortatkinsononline.com. I'm Michael Klisch. Thank you for watching, and please vote April 5th.